Okay, I'd like to call the village board meeting, joint finance and personnel budget meeting to order. I will call the village board meeting to order, please.
Trustee Allison Williams.
President.
Trustee Paul.
President.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Here.
Trustee Bukowski.
Here.
Trustee Melchesky.
Here.
President Kardowski.
Here.
I'd like to call the finance personnel meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Melchesky.
President.
Mr. Zerbal.
Here.
Mr. Dauska is excused this evening. Mr. Salk.
Here.
And Chairman Williams.
Here.
Okay, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember all the men and women we have throughout the world. Okay, I need action on the agenda. I have no changes. Mark, any for you?
Nope.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Action items, 5A, 2018 budget review. Before the budget review starts, I'd just like to say that Allison and Greg really, really worked very hard. This was the first time that I did a budget from start to finish because the other times I was a trustee and I kind of got the budget when it was presented. And the department heads, Allison and Greg, did an awesome job. We added a few people and hopefully given people some of the things that they need. And at the end, our tax rate should remain flat at 612, hopefully. We'll see what happens tonight. And we've added some people that we need. So I think it's a really good budget and I'd like to thank all the staff. You've done a great job. So, thank you. That being said, we'll move forward.
Do you want Greg to do a brief overview or you guys want to learn about things kind of as we flip through? How would you guys like to handle it? You want it just to prove it as submitted?
I'll make that motion with one minor exception.
Yeah. I got another one.
Sorry. Do you, I mean, I've seen this budget for a couple of weeks, page by page by page. So what would you like to see? Would you, do you want an overview from Greg?
Madam President, I think that's a great idea. I think an overview from you and Greg and Allison, I think all of us know, I know Allison at the other end, this is her first budget, but the rest of us have been here a little bit. Chris, is your first one or second one?
First one.
Okay. These folks really put in a lot of time and effort. And I've gone over it, I had it last week when I was gone, but I looked it over. I'd like to see an overview and then if anyone has any changes, additions, deletions, or whatever, we could take those one at a time. But I don't see a need for going over every one in here, other than the ones that maybe you or Allison or Greg might bring to our attention for one reason or another.
Okay.
That's just me though.
I'd like to second that motion with Ken. The majority of us has been through this a number of times. We hire staff that knows numbers. They do a good job at that, like I don't have to thank like Mary did, but they do an excellent job at doing this. And I think the overlay would be good to do it. We can always throw in our two cents whenever needed. But I trust what they do and the numbers on the end always work out. So I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Take your way.
Two people that want an overview and everybody's in agreement?
Start there.
Let's start there and here we, oh, and I just wanted to add though too, with Greg doing, keeping our tax rate flat at the 612, that is 70 cents of that 612 is paying for our three referendum projects, correct Greg?
Actually, it's 75 cents.
Seventy-five.
So that was going to be my starting point.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Stole your thunder. Go ahead.
So, right, so the process starts in midsummer in preparation and then the budget was rolled out a little bit later this year, just to allow a little more time for summer to end and have a better feel, a little bit closer to the newer year. So all the information is provided to staff. They get information on the prior year budget, they get some actuals and things like that, forecasted numbers. And so they go and they start their preparation. They look at their operations, they look at their needs, they take into account obviously a lot of factors that have been discussed over time. Everyone kind of has their own, you know, three to five year planning that they look at and try to bring in, you know, what they need. It's not just a big Christmas list, it's not a big want list. It really is well thought out, following comp plans, following, you know, different plans that are out there. And so obviously the intent is to first get a goal. What are we trying to do? Mary presented it as she'd like to keep the tax rate flat. That was our goal. So to address the tax rate, we actually were able to keep the tax rate at 612, like she said. Last year, however, 70 cents of that 612 went to referendum. This year, 75 cents. So in essence, we actually dropped the municipal rate by five cents so that we could keep the overall rate at 612. In doing that, there are still a lot of projects that are in the budget. Yes, some things were removed. But overall, the reason why that happens, I'm not going to get into the details of the numbers, but our valuations, our valuation of the village, we have TIF valuations, we have regular valuations, just how that plays out sometimes allows you to do more with less, if you will. And we had a lot of growth in the village from an equalized and assessed value standpoint. So that allows us to raise our levy dollars a little bit more without raising the rate. I know that can sound confusing. But overall, 612 was our goal and we were able to achieve that. And as was mentioned, you know, there really is a lot of credit to the staff. They come in, thought out plans and ideas and it can be a bit humbling when, you know, you feel like this is what you need and just sometimes it doesn't work that way. But staff, they work very well together, they understand the process, they understand the needs of the village first versus their own individual departments. So it makes my job a lot easier when they're as cooperative as they are. So I thank them too through this process. So the key adds, if you will, to this year would be some personnel. We increased, in the public works department, we were able to add two full-time positions. However, the majority of that cost, 60% of each of those positions will go into the storm water utility, but it's really almost a full-time person add to our general public works operations just as we continue to grow in new areas, you know, the title town district, other areas, we add more sidewalks, there's more snow removal, it's more of everything. That'll help alleviate some of those issues. And we also brought in a part-time role, a half-time role in the IT world to assist with our network administrator. The goal there is to help him focus on larger projects. I had a good analogy, I'm not going to show it, but IT continues to grow and it grows somewhat exponentially. Everything wants new IT, everything that comes in has bigger IT, just even an ambulance, for example. 10 years ago, an ambulance didn't necessarily have a laptop in it. Now they have that, they have more technology. That's just, it's more time and effort on our IT staff. So that's why we wanted to add a position there. So just like other areas that are growing and there's more demand, we have that in IT. So our goal there is to address that situation.
Can you say the offset to the corresponding offset?
Oh, the offset would be in that regard, we have a contracted programmer who has now really set up some of our programming needs pretty well and we're able to reduce those hours at a much higher rate. So it kind of offsets that cost in that department. And talked with that individual and very comfortable with that reduction in hours. In fact, this year, we're going to end up budgeting where he's actually coming in this year, which is under budget quite a bit. There are still some major projects that we're able to accomplish. We need to get a new boiler, that's in this budget. That's roughly $180,000 project. It's an old, I think it's from, I don't even remember how old it is, but it's well in need of replacement. There are still a lot of capital needs within public safety and park and recreation that are added. There are some that were removed, but still a lot of projects and equipment needs that are addressed here that are covered. So we also had a, about a $77,000 increase in our state shared transportation aid, which has not happened since I've been here. So that's a good, good number that we have. That helped our budget a lot as well. So, you know, there's a lot of moving parts. In your budget book, if you notice, there is a section called modifications, starting on page 13, that lists out all of the items that were modified by, essentially initially by Mary, Allison, as we reviewed this and then met with the department heads and talked through all those. Some of those were requests that were just removed from the original submission. So the original submission, we had to find, you know, about really $500,000 to make this work. And some of this gets shifted around and then there's other changes. But these, this is a way for you to understand all of what was tracked from the original submission and what were all the modifications made. Some of them are just an oops, so I didn't see that and we forgot to add it to the original submission, or some things are removed or adjusted. So it's a good point, it's a good couple pages for you to see, that's kind of all of the actions that are taken and those are all discussed with each of the department heads. We try to find alternative means, we try to find trade-offs if we can. Maybe it's extending out a replacement program from two years to three years, or it's, you know, looking at maintenance records and realizing maybe we don't have to get it this year, but we'll address it again next year. So there's, it's not just a, you know, we don't like this, so we're not going to do it. There's time and effort put at each of these points. So from there, then you get your final numbers and we have most of the information come in from the state later. That's also why we push back this process a little bit. So we do have the final assessment numbers and that is what the tax rate would be. So some years, we're still waiting for a final assessment ratio, but we do have that now. So as it's laid out, it's 612. And so I guess at that point, however you want to move forward, we've traditionally gone through department by department, but you know, if we can just as well do it, if you've got specific questions or concerns or pull up any of the department heads to answer any questions, we do that as well, so.
Couple other items to note, Greg makes it seem really simple that we got 500 out of there, or maybe you think that we just ripped the guts out of something. A good chunk of that was, we have continued, you know, if WPS says electrical rates are going up X, we raise our rates up X. Over time, that has increased more than what it ended up being. So we trimmed that back and that was a significant adjustment. Health insurance was a 10% reduction in the premium costs across the board. So that becomes a larger number. Dental actually increased by 10%, but it's a relatively smaller amount overall in terms of impact on the budget, so that's a little bit different. Also in terms of other high points that are in the budget, we do have 63,000 budgeted for a reevaluation by the assessor's office for next year. Our, part of what makes budgeting a struggle is what our equalized rate is and that has continued to drop. This year, we're at about 93%.
Ninety-four.
94%. We would project that there, which means that we are undervalued over what the market is. And if we would drop down to about 10% below, meaning 90%, it's kind of an automatic that we have to do it and we just think with what, things that are happening within the village that that gap is widening pretty quickly on us. So he will do a market reevaluation next year and is budgeted in there with O'Nited service agreement dollars as, since that is a one-time cost. Other changes would be, you know, we're really struggling with the EAB, we had a lot of debate about that. We are increasing the, on the general fund portion, the amount of tree trimming that will be done, that was significantly cut probably six, seven, eight years ago. And so now we're trying to add some of that back in there so we can get back on track. And then also, kind of on a good note, we are requesting the purchase of a sump grinder that we would share 50/50 in cost and usage with the Village of Alloway. So trying to do some, something a little more unique in terms of trying to share some equipment that doesn't get used necessarily every single day.
What about the Emerald Ash Bor, cut back?
Overall, what we wrestled with is there have been funds requested in there for injection of trees, but that has to be done all the time and it really was, in talking it over with Tim and Rex, what we felt was delaying the inevitable, that eventually you're still going to end up with this peak of having to remove some trees. So that was part of, kind of, I guess, Mary and I and Rex's discussion with them was saying, let's increase what's being removed and try to be a little bit more proactive so we can get new plantings in place and curb that because we just don't see spending, spend a fair amount of money on trying to inject it and it's just a reoccurring expense that's not necessarily going to get us anywhere in the long, you know, in say a 10-year span. And there is a few areas where they had talked about removing Emerald Ash Bor, but we were trying to be a little bit more sensitive in terms of Argon Park, trying to just maintain the trees in that area as a sound noise buffer along the highway. Other areas like Eschwab May, they are trying to clean out some things and then those, that location could continue.
That's an expensive operation. I know, I've had it twice now in one tree and one was $200, the other was $300. And the first one was guaranteed three years, the second one was only guaranteed two years. It's not, it's not cheap. Inoculating the trees, if you will, for Emerald Ash Bor, it's an expensive proposition. I just, I just want to, I'm not, I think all of us are fairly conservative when it comes to spending and I am too, but I'm also of a mind that if we need to go up a penny or two pennies or a nickel, I'm not, in order so that things are repaired and replaced as we go, I'm okay, I'm fine with 612. I know Mary's a good keeper of the purse and that's, and so are you too, and that's wonderful, so are department heads. But I'm not opposed to going up if we need to. Now, once I work for a county executive who, no, no, no increases, no increase from year to year to year. Well, you can't always do that. Sometimes things go up and you need things, you need to repair, you need a new boiler or whatever the case may be. So you did a great job in keeping it at 612, but I guess for my purposes, for the future, if we have to go up a penny or two or three, because of those items that need replacing, that need maintenance and so forth, our IT just keeps going up, up, up. And that's just part of who we are and how we live today. So sometimes, you know, it has to go up a little bit, but I'm glad it stayed the way it was. Secondly, and I'll shut the heck up here, part of what I said initially is, I've been here long enough, I trust the department heads. And I think that trust is really key to, I personally feel, I know them all, they do a great job, but I would like to ask at this point, if it's appropriate, Madam President, if there are any department heads who are here who think they deserve something or need something, as the case may be, that was taken out or not put in. And I know they wouldn't feel intimidated by speaking in front of village president, the village manager and our finance director, but if there is someone here, a department head, who feels that they need to say something, I hope you don't hold back. I mean, they may give you a dirty look, but don't worry about that. We'll take care of that.
With what you're, with what you just said, Ken, I want to add to it. I'm not opposed to ever raising the tax rate a penny or two or five cents if we need it.
Right.
But there were a lot of, there were a lot of things that we have that are going forward that have, you know, we have some big cost items in the capital plan.
Right.
That we're going to need to outlay next year and the year after. So that's why I thought if we could do it this year to keep it the same.
Sure, sure.
So that's why I asked for that.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, and yeah, department heads, if you feel that you want and need something that you didn't get.
Can I make a couple of comments here?
Yes, Mark.
Or ask a couple of questions? In your budget modifications, you have $183,000 that was added? Fifteen?
You're just being the net impact at the end. Okay, yes. Sorry, I thought you were talking about a specific line item.
Net impact would be the revenues less, right.
Say that again?
So that's the net change and what that, that's actually not, that's actually reducing our overall gap of the negative change in equity. So that would be, we're able to add 235 of revenue and only add 50, we actually added 53 of expense. So that nets down to 183. That's a positive impact. That's not, that's revenues less expenditures impact. We added, a lot of that's the revenue impact. So for example, the 77,000 from transportation aid, that, once I got the revised number from the state after the initial submission. And then you see property tax, what that means on that line on page 10 is, as we, when we look at the levy, we have a total number. And then obviously the first thing you do is you go to your debt service needs and you take what you need to pay off your debt. Then we have capital project funds, for example, the street repairs and the village building fund, and we put dollars into there, like I think initially we had enough money in there to cover the boiler. Well, if we decide to use O'Nida money, for example, then that frees up that tax levy dollars to put into the general fund. So that didn't actually raise our taxes, it's just how it was reallocated.
My question is, $183,000, you said you cut it to half a million. Where did it all come from?
Well, a lot of that was repositioning projects into O'Nida service agreement funds. So that had, that's $350,000 that we get, so we're able to put, okay, instead of buying it in with the general dollars, we'll put it over there. So that's a large majority of that, it's repositioning where we're going to buy it. But we still look at all those areas, some of those things that we initially thought we would, we said no. As Allison pointed out, we increased contracting for forestry, but we wanted to bake that into the actual levy. So we didn't put that to O'Nida, we put it into the forestry budget so that next year, he has a new base to start from.
So we don't include the O'Nida service agreement dollars in our actual revenues?
That's its own fund.
It's a what fund?
It is its own fund.
Its own fund.
This page here is just talking about the general fund. So this, that's why there's impacts by, if we say, well, we're going to use, we'll eat into the reserves in the village building fund, for example, then you would have more levy dollars to apply against the general fund. So in this case, some of those projects that initially were in the general fund budget, we pushed over to the O'Nida service agreement fund budget and that frees up more dollars to put in here.
Essentially, all the department heads are entering in all of their budget requests electronically into Greg's mastermind spreadsheet of sorts. And then those would all essentially be in the, they're entering them in the appropriate funds, but not necessarily putting anything in those O'Nida service agreement dollars. And we do not want to treat those O'Nida service agreement dollars as just a basic revenue into the general fund because if that stops for some reason or that agreement is up at the end of next year, if something changes in that amount and then we're, you know, paying all of our salaries on it, then we have a bigger gap to try and figure out with the general fund budget. So we are trying to find items as we go through that are, this is a one-time thing, we'll stick it over there. You know, we can stick it to buy a boiler because we're not going to buy another boiler for another 20, 30 years, cross our fingers, that stuff.
This is the fourth one, right Doug?
I don't think it's the fourth one.
This will be our first boiler replacement, it's at village hall here. We have a system of three boilers that operate during the entire year. They're 24 years old. We've been sticking more and more money into them each year and that's the reason why we're going through the replacement program now. We did the roof four or five years ago, did all of the control work throughout the village hall, upgraded that three years ago, did the interior remodel this year and now the boiler systems are last, last big project we have here at village hall to replace so that we're good for, I'm going to say 15 years plus. There'll be maintenance items that come up, but the large, the large pay items are being wrapped up this coming budget season.
Okay. I thought that this was the final boiler though, that we were replacing.
We haven't replaced any boilers yet. This is, this is the system that's being, it's being replaced all at one time. We aren't able to take one offline.
One of the interesting things that I learned with this budget being right from the start was like, the one thing I can remember, the chief had put in his budget for the air exchange issue in the garage for when they start the cars and the ambulances and all that stuff. We took that out of his budget and we put it into village hall maintenance budget. So, you know, sometimes some of those things were taken out of this budget and moved over into this fund to pay for it in that way. So I never knew that that's how they did that, but now I do.
Just to hop in, Mary, the item that you may be thinking of is we replaced the chiller. That was, I think, six years ago now that we replaced that. So the chiller handles all of our cooling needs during the summer, the boilers handle everything else during the spring, spring and fall.
That's why I don't do HVAC.
So next year's the last year of the five-year O'Nida agreement, 2018?
Yes.
Okay, you plan on rehashing it with them sometime during 2018, I presume?
Yes.
Okay. And next year, that amount is up to 350? Did I hear that right or?
Yeah, the original amount was based off of a formula of a state municipal payment and then as whatever percent of our tax rate went up, then that payment would go up the same percentage.
All right, thank you.
Also in his budget, employee increases, what do you have calculated in there?
2% in for employee increases. Keep in mind, we have the performance review process, which is merit-based, so people will get up and down within that range depending on what's happening in there. And then we have the public safety grievance, which we have now settled, but we have a wage reserve in there to cover those additional expenses as well relating to that.
Do all employees get the same raise?
Generally speaking, they do, except for now with the performance reviews, potentially you would, you have to get forward and above to get a 2%. And if you don't, then, you know, depending on the magnitude of that issue, you may see a reduction in that.
Are part-time employees getting the same percentage raise as regular employees?
Regular part-time employees do, like for example, we have fire inspectors that work part-time, code enforcer enforcement, those would, the college people.
Life guards, parkies, paid-on-call firemen.
Paid-on-call have a different, different amount in here in terms of some promotions that were given. And then you have something built in here for crossing guards. Parkies are a little different category. Rex kind of has a system where essentially if you come back, you get another quarter and they usually cycle through in probably a four-year time span. And so they get a little bit more and then the new people start over. Last year, we did a complete overhaul of that entire system and that entire pay scale shifted, all the positions shifted significantly in a variety of different ways depending on demand for them, you know, lifeguards are in higher demand than parkies probably, so things like that.
Well, I just don't want us to see us, I know that years ago, we had cut out any increases for any part-time employees basically at the time and the discrepancy that rises from doing that and taking, I'll take a lifeguard for instance, where Exchwab and if we froze the wages on lifeguards and they're, they're hard to come by right now, with, especially with our new pool and everything, I don't want to go behind the market rate of what Green Bay is hiring them for. I want to keep up with the Joneses, just like you do with everything else.
Okay. I think we talked quite a bit with Melody and she can touch on it if you want, but I think she was pretty comfortable where she was at and her ability to recruit.
I just use that as an example. I mean, so I mean.
But we rehashed that last year and they kind of liked their system of the adding the additional quarter, that's for the summer people. I think there became an issue with that in terms of some of the seasonal guys were getting that additional quarter and then all of a sudden they built up because they were coming back year after year for 10 years and whatnot. So I think there's some freezing in those, there's been a little bit of turnover in some of those areas as people retire, retire, retire from their retirement type of thing. But otherwise, regular part-time and I think we have all our positions actually covered. I would agree with you in terms of, we need to keep that up, otherwise it's just a, it's a harder nut to crack into the budget five years from now and you need to raise them by a dollar or something like that. It's harder to do than just doing a 2% or something across the board.
On salaries, again, I'm going to just touch on it again, is, is what you have in the budget for all the different areas, if something comes down where we hire a new employee and that budget is not enough, is there enough flexibility in our budget right now to accommodate that?
We have a separate wage reserve too for other types of problems, and then also, we just have natural turnover that allows that to happen.
Don't answer that question.
That was exactly what I wanted to hear. That was perfect.
You want me to not have a wage reserve?
No.
That's the last time I'm going to lobby him, I'll tell you.
I didn't have to.
His problem could be resolved.
Is that the wage reserve on page 41 for the general government? Is that the?
Yes.
Yes. You're rotten.
That was up this year to accommodate for, as Allison alluded to, the, the grievance issue. Because at the time, we didn't know where that was going to settle out, but now that will cover as, as that's been resolved. So a portion of that, large portion of that would go to that, but there's always enough, I mean typically, we budget about 20,000. It's probably well more than we need, but it's, it's in those instances where things happen during the year and you may need it for different reasons, so.
So if you really wanted to touch on the issue that I think you're trying to touch on with the PAC, it's just the right to the juggler. So what was in the budget was a number that I received from Kate. I'm not trying to throw her under the bus. She was trying to run numbers and put them together as quickly as possible, and so she gave us a number of about 30,000 and some change. As they worked through, you know, FICA and all those other extra things that have to go into it, it's for a technical, part-time technical director assistance, and then also for some administrative help for Kate. That number actually is 34,000 and some change, so the number you may have heard, thrown out there is $5,000 increase for that. The additional money that we put in there is in Oneida service agreement dollars. We did not put this into the general fund. So I think we have the ability to adjust it in terms of the Oneida service agreement dollars, and that would probably be better to do that than using it out of the wage reserve, because the wage reserve comes from the general fund itself, and the rest of those positions are not.
It says it's 8100 or whatever. It's not, it's, it's not.
Where are you now?
Is that Oneida dollars?
8100 is the account number.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, there's, the, Allison's talking about the increase.
I understand.
For this year versus the, right now, how we're paying it, it comes out, we created a, a department within Park and Recreation called PAC, and it's just, we get an invoice from the school district. They actually have Kate on their payroll, and then we just reimburse them for a portion that we agreed to, so.
So Kate is separate, though, in terms of where we put the money. We have Kate built in, in terms of that PAC budget, but these new dollars, we've put into the Oneida service agreement dollars.
Account number 8100 is not our, our regular budget. It's a Oneida service dollar? Page 14. What is, what is account 8100?
That's just a, it's an account number. It's a contracted services account number. She's in the department, Fund 100 Department 5561. So yes, the increase is actually in the general fund budget of the PAC. We had talked about using Oneida money, but it went back, it's back in here. The full increase, right, that's that increase from 2017 to 2018 budget. It's an increase of $33,000. That includes that initial $30,000 increase.
So to increase that, the additional 5,000, do you want that out of the wage reserve?
It could just come out of the wage reserve. That would be the solution.
Take that back, then there you go.
I don't, I wouldn't be in favor of taking out Oneida money.
You would not?
I would not. It's an, it's a every-year expense. When you don't know what your, your Oneida money is, just the explanation we just got, we don't want to take reoccurring monies out of there.
Let me, let me jump in here for a second, if I might. My buddy to the right here is, is raising some very interesting and legitimate issues. We've been, Allison and I and Mary have had several meetings, and Mr. Van Lannan here is the chair of the school board, and Kate, of course, here's our manager. And I, you know, I don't want to get bogged down over a relatively small amount of money, but, but let's, let's put everything on the table. What we want, what we wanted to do is give the PAC two years, starting this coming January, a two, a good two-year opportunity to get its feet on the ground and see where we go financially. Now, we knew it would never be self-supporting. Most of the work that, not work, but most of the activity that goes on there is school-related, and that's wonderful. That's one of the main reasons it was built. When I saw the schedule of, of school activities at the PAC, I was absolutely flabbergasted. Between the high school, Parkview, the, the other schools, and it's, it's just a lot of dates that are taken up by the schools, which, which is terrific. The first gentleman who was hired to run the PAC, he was good at technology. He, he was, he didn't have the background that Kate had in terms of running, administratively running a facility like that. Well, Kate's kind of, I don't want to say 180 degrees from that, but she, she, on the other hand, has the background in managing a facility. But we need someone with technical expertise. My wife and I just got back from Branson, and I'm not comparing our PAC with Branson. Too much country music for me. But anyway, the amount of technology that goes into these shows today, even here, is tremendous. And you have to have someone who has the knowledge and the background to take care of that technology. The school district has been generous in allowing Mr. Bernie Rochelieu to spend part of his time to help with the school area and technology that, that goes on with, with the school functions. But we need someone there who, who can do that for the other things that go on at the PAC. Okay. The other thing that we need, it became obviously clear that we need someone to help administratively with all the things that go on there. And so that's what the increase of the $30,000 is already in the budget for, for those two, it'd be part-time people, part-time folks. And so when Mr. Lucius from the school district came out with his latest estimate, it was like $35,000 instead of 30. So I asked if we could put another $5,000 in the park budget for the Performing Arts Center for those two part-time folks on a two-year commitment. 5,000 this year, and then an extra, the same amount next year that we would need. So we give it a good two-year start. So, okay, where are we? If you're, if you're saying that with the 30,000 in there, if, 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 capital I F, it gets to the point where we need another $4,000, that it's available someplace? If that's what you're telling me and telling Mr. Van Lannan, because the school district has already gone on record, they voted for. Okay, you're voting tomorrow, and you don't think there's an, an issue? Not an issue, okay. So assuming, assuming then that.
Can I butt in just for a second on a question? The school is giving $30,000 for this, and?
35.
Pardon?
35.
35?
Right.
And there, and what, we are going to throw in?
30.
35.
35.
Yes. No, we're, no, there's 30 in the budget.
There's 30 in the budget because we pay half, the board pays half, we pay half.
And I was going to ask for an additional five to match what we suspect the school board will pass tomorrow night. So it'll both be 35. But if, if we already have 30 in the budget now.
That I realize.
Okay. So if, if Allison and Greg and Mary are saying, if we need an extra $4,000 or $5,000, that it's available, well, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. But I don't, you know, six months from now, I hate to come back here and say, well, folks, we don't have the money, we have to fire these two people or get more money from the school district. I sure don't want to do that. So if you two are telling us that, that money would be available, then I'm okay with that. Okay, all right. And just for those of you who don't get the paper anymore, maybe more of us, you don't get the papers, I know you don't read it. There's an article in today's paper, it says, "Tomorrow, a German band, Eins Hoch, will, will perform a concert at the PAC from noon to 2 o'clock at, at our, at our new facility." And Kate was explaining to me before the meeting that, that was meant to bring in German students from other schools and bring them into the community. We have seats left over that would be available to the public. That's just one small, small item in terms of what goes on there, in terms of what's there other than just school events. So, and that gets bigger and bigger all the time. Today, we just received a check from, from a good benefactor, one of the dentists in town, and he's helping sponsor the Christmas show. So it's constant. We've been raising money for shows this year, and I just don't want to have to come back here and ask this board again for my money in the middle of the year. I don't want to do that. I'd rather take the vote now if, if the money wasn't available, but it appears that it would be available if needed. So Jay, you've heard the discussion here. I don't know if you want to tell your school board that tomorrow night, or whatever you want to tell them, it's up to you, but I think all the board members here have obviously have heard what Allison and Greg have told us. So that's a long story. I'm sorry, I don't mean to go on forever, but that's where it's at.
I'm talking with Greg, we're saying, don't, don't make a motion to change it, leave it where it is, because we're getting a bill for the difference, and it may depend on the, how, when, when she hires them and the, all that kind of stuff will vary anyway, so it won't matter.
Okay. All right, all right.
Good.
All right, and?
We would, we would just take the, when the positions are final, when that happens, we would then just, I'm assuming the ma, that they've established the maximum, so we would then at that point, once we get the first bill, I would know then how to reallocate the existing funds out of that wage reserve into that budget.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you. Jay, if, if, Madam President, if you don't mind, you're okay, you heard, you heard the discussion. You can relay that to the school board tomorrow. Terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
Kate, you're, you heard it as well. All right. Mark, you've heard it too. I know it.
Got a question about health insurance. That, the biggest decrease is $200,000, over $200,000. What, you get me up to speed on why it's going down, because all I'm hearing is health insurance premiums are going up.
So we had a huge increase last year, and ours is decreasing for a couple of reasons. Last year, our biggest bump was in reinsurance. We had a contract where they could not do a laser, essentially say, this person has a higher reinsurance limit than other people. And because we had a contract that didn't allow that, they were, the alternative is to that, that they can raise our rate up to 55% and they, of which they did, and that was still the best deal we could find in town. Now, this year, because of change of circumstances, we actually received a 9% decrease in that amount. And then we did a full request for proposals and competitive bidding essentially in terms of our administration of it. We had been with PBA, which used an HPS network, if you will. So it's a, it's an added layer, but it gave us a, you know, 30% discount, if you will, on all of our claims, more or less, if you want to take an average of it. Part of our change for this year that we brought through finance personnel, we talked about switching to UMR. We have some other changes in there, but that's probably the largest one where they're saying, because of that switch, we have a different network that, we have the exact same providers, but we're getting better discounts than we were receiving before. And then that's a, a larger part of that change overall. And then we're also having a better claims year in general this year. We're a relatively small group. We're about 106 people total on, in terms of employees and retirees on the plan, total lives are about 300. So we kind of ride the wave of the good is good, and if, you know, you get a cancer or something like that, it really causes a different trajectory on our system. And so we kind of have to ride up in those ups and down waves. But as long as we're doing good, the plan does well overall.
Yeah, I asked before, any department heads want us, other than the chief? I'm sorry, chief, I didn't mean that. Anybody want, want to say anything, really? No? You all okay? I know everybody wants something that's not in a budget. We all understand that, but.
I just have one, one thing, and it's on the enterprise funds, that's the water and sewer utilities. Because a lot of times, you see all the numbers and just what we're, what we're hearing tentatively from New Water, the Green Bay Met Sewer District, is they're going to see a, a 0% to 2% decrease in the rates for next year. So our sewer rate, we're still having it reviewed by Schenk. We anticipate that being close to a zero in terms of our rate increase on the sewer end of things. On the water end of things, we haven't had a rate increase since 2006. We're going to have to look at that and potentially early next year have a rate increase on the water end, single digits, just so we keep up with some of the rate increases that are coming from Green Bay water.
You know, now that we've been on Lake Michigan water for a while, is that, was that a good move for the village? I mean, now we've had a chance to look at it and look back on it, that that was a good move?
Oh, yeah.
In your, in your opinion?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think the decision the village made back at that time to connect on the Green Bay water has saved our residents and our businesses a lot of money in terms of their rates compared to the other options.
I thought that was the case.
We don't, we don't want to gloat, but that, I think, is one of the best decisions we've made for our residents and businesses out there.
Okay, thank you.
Occasionally, the municipalities will combine all their tax rates and all that kind of stuff, what it costs for people to live in various other communities. Don't be fooled by just looking at the tax rates. The municipalities all do it so differently, but if you look at water in particular and what it costs, there are communities that their monthly bill is equivalent to what our residents pay on a quarterly basis. It is that big of a difference.
Are we still contracting with the pier for service to our southern part of our village?
Correct.
Okay. For fire and, and rescue?
Yes.
Okay.
Rescue, rescue, sorry, only.
Thank you.
Couple, month ago or so, we were talking about unused 2017 funds. Appears to be that we're almost a half a million dollars under last year's budget, correct? Do we have a plan for what we're doing with that, or is it just going to go in fund balance?
Yeah, that discussion came up. The plan was to come back in December, and my recommendation is that we, we do take, we have that and other funds that we need to really take some time and effort and thought in what we want to do with that long-term. And I'll put that through as a resolution so that it's kind of earmarked, if you will, on the books. So anyone in the future, if we start spending down on those funds, it's not viewed negatively like we overspent our budget. And that's just to protect ourselves really from the rating agencies, because they'll look and say, hey, you spent more than you budgeted, and they kind of look at that, but if we, just a simple even, hey, we're going to reserve this for future capital needs. And you can always change your mind, you can always readjust it as you go along, but.
So we didn't make up a plan yet for what?
No.
We're going to, until it comes?
Correct. We wanted to get through this, and then we'll bring that back in December, and you'll have that, I'll have a cleaner number. We also had the, the grievance issue going on, and we didn't really know where that was going to lead us. So there was concern of if we needed some of those funds or where we're going to be. But now, I think we have a little bit better view of how the year is going to, going to finish off, and then, because there's other funds as well in addition to the excess funds.
So do we have the list of un, capital, capital projects that were deleted out of this budget?
There are a couple, yes. Yeah, well, I would have that full list, I could bring that, and could bring that to the meeting, say, here's all the items that were, that were put, put aside, or also other future needs.
There aren't any items that we said, no, they're not in the budget, that they'll be paid for. We brought through, that's what I was just asking you, I think, in, in terms of how we did it, they're all in, in terms of items that we are approving, or Mary's approving in the budget, they're already in here. There aren't any other items left to use, 2017 items that got cut from this, so they could use that. If that, I think that's what you were actually asking. We had a couple items from Doug. Right, and those went through. And then we kind of had a list and said, okay, should these go into which category? And we've resolved it all into the 2018 category and didn't tap into the 2017 category, in large part, like Greg is saying, because of the public safety grievance, that was a pretty significant number, one way or another, that we were kind of reserving, so.
That was kind of a, of a different philosophy when we were doing this budget, that you, That was kind of a different philosophy when we were doing this budget, that you have to use the $20,000. You don't grab the reserve 2017. You just spend the 2018, and then you've got that there if you choose to spend it again.
But I'm just, I'll pick this one here. Only one of two requested SWAT tactical vests that was eliminated out of the budget. Is that some, is that a project that would come forward to us if we chose to for the unused funds from 2017?
Technically, you can spend those funds on whatever you would like. So I think because of the size of that, we're talking about, we're talking about the settlement dollars, we're talking about excess out of the regular budget funds. So, and that's why we brought it up at our last, the finance personnel meeting, was to at least put it out there that this, because of the size and amount, we need to really have a, think through all the different options and what would make the most sense. Is it buying some of these things? Could be, could be a mix of a blend, it could be used for future debt needs. So, because if you, if you spend, if you take a million dollars, for example, and apply it against future capital need that you were going to borrow for, you've really saved yourself $1.2 million because of the interest savings. So there's a variety of different factors. It can be a blend. So that's why I think it's important to have a more detailed discussion and more of a, if you almost have a brainstorming session to think about, "Okay, what are the bigger projects coming along in the next five years? What are, what are we thinking? Are there roads that we're going to have to redo that we would have a large capital expense for?" And maximize the potential of the dollars. For example, instead of borrowing, use the funds there, and you're saving, you've just added, you know, 20, 30% of value to those dollars. But yeah, to answer your question, you could, if you wanted to do that, you could do that.
That's one of the things we did, is try to use, to accommodate some of these other things that are needs as well.
And that's just one thing, it's a little bit different to look at that item, because it's a sort of somewhat a one-time cost that won't get replicated again for seven years or whatever it is. But if you say you want to talk about Skog Kaiser or something else, it's apportioned out over five years, so you can't, can't just take that one little piece out of here. It's still going to affect the budget next year and the subsequent years in terms of how that depreciation works. So the discussion's not going to be the same for all those different types of items, if that makes sense.
Are we going to do the same thing with the remediation dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
All of that will be out there, the remediation dollars, the excess $2017, it'll just be lumped together.
Okay.
And I'm not saying a decision has to be made, certainly if that's the board's decision, they can, but the key is that you're just assigning it kind of off the side, it's own line item, it's called reserved, and that way it's denoted that you're going to make a decision on that at some point in the future.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody, especially the new people that have just looked at, did you have special questions in it that you wrote on the side margins you want us to address? Do you want to hit some of those?
Well, me and you, this, to the village board, what's, there's a lot of the money being transferred with the Oneida Service Agreement, the fund. Generally speaking, what's the agreement? And what's the philosophy of the fund, and are there things it can't be used for? Because it seems a lot of, this goes right through the budget beginning to end.
So the Oneida Service Agreement, we have an agreement with the Oneida Nation that because they have land in trust and do not pay taxes for it, that they are making essentially a payment in lieu of taxes. And it's based on an agreement that in this case, it's a five-year agreement, or three-year, I think, agreement at this particular time. And it's, this time they did it based on a calculation, sort of almost tied in with how state aid is calculated of sorts. But as Greg mentioned before, as, there was a determined amount for it, and then as our tax rate went up maybe 3% or 5% or down, if it would go down 2%, that's how that dollar figure within that agreement was adjusted accordingly. They do, they're, we're both willing parties to that agreement. You can see other communities arguing over their agreements with the Oneida Nation, so that's why you don't, it assumes that both parties are willing to participate and come to some mutual agreement on it. And so that's why we don't bank on it, because if they decided to not, or you guys decided not to renew that agreement in, for 2019 and beyond, then there, that revenue would be lost. So we don't want to put that into something that's in the general fund, because that's how it would get lost, if you will, and then we'd have to make up those dollars. So we essentially put together this budget and then go back through and identify, "Okay, what are some things that are, this is a one-time deal. We're going to, you know, hypothetically, take that stump grinder, I guess, if you will. We're not going to buy another stump grinder for a while," or say it was the SWAT vest, whatever it was, we take those things and we say, "That's what we're going to do." A lot of times, it's park and rec projects or activities, you know, we need to buy a set of bleachers, and you're not going to buy them again for a long time. Those are items that we pull out on a one-time basis and use those funds for that particular year. The past few years, we did use those for the referendum projects. And so it was probably a little cleaner the last couple of years. This year, it's little odds and ends, for the most part, because there wasn't one big thing that kind of tackled that portion of funds.
Not to get into a long discussion, Chris, but this is where the city of Green Bay and Hobart in particular struggle. Because if I remember, I don't know if it's been resolved, I don't know, Tony, if you know or not, but city of Green Bay, the last time, last go-around, talking with the Oneida, the Oneidas wanted Green Bay to sign a part of the agreement would be, they, the city, would not object to the tribe putting land in trust. And the city said, "Uh, no, we aren't going to agree to that." So then, things fall apart. And Hobart is really struggling, they've been struggling with that for years, how to deal with that. So we're fortunate in the sense that we had a five-year agreement, if I understand it right. Last year, the agreement is 2018, and then we'll have to renegotiate it.
Allison, we do provide service to the Oneida Tribe too, don't we, for some of that money?
We're required by law to provide services to them anyway. That we do have a separate, separate from this agreement, we provide rescue services, they provide a different amount of money for that. Then also, at the time we negotiated this agreement, they were receiving bus services out to the casino and was not being utilized, so they cut that, their agreement with Green Bay Metro. But because that line got cut, then it affected our bus routes and also our, like, the handicap bus service, it has another route, and it can only go within a buffer, if you will, of the main route. And because of that change, it had some other significant impacts to us. So as part of our agreement, we added in about 30...
It's $32,000.
...dollars in order to cover some additional costs we have incurred with Green Bay Metro in order to kind of even out and provide equal service to what we had before because of the larger loop that was, that they were providing. So there's a chunk of it that goes to that. But in terms of tribal properties, there are a few homes, otherwise, for the most part, it's more business-type property or vacant property that they have in trust, but we would, no matter what, have to, if there's police call or whatever, we would have to do that, we don't have a choice.
And that's basically how that number is calculated. It's the valuations of those parcels times, you know, a certain rate. And so each of the communities they were dealing with were trying to do it a little bit differently, so that's why they changed and said, "Hey, let's do it how the state figures out this municipal aid payment." And so we just kind of mock that same methodology, and that way it's clean for everybody. And it's quite easy then, and that's the basis of how that number comes about, what services do we provide and to what parcels. So we virtually provide them no park and rec service, so there's no, you know, amount allocated towards that type of service, but it's mostly public safety.
So the agreement doesn't, doesn't keep the village from spending in a certain way at all? The village just has the philosophy which you mentioned on certain types of projects?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions in your little side note?
One thing on equipment replacement. These are things that are, are going to be replaced this year that have been approved. I see...
What page are you on, Gary?
Uh, 169, the last category. There are some things in here, now, I know we replaced some trucks and whatever, but these are new ones coming up that need replacement. I'm not criticizing them needing replacement, but they will be coming in front of us again for your quotes, Doug. I guess I'm looking at you.
Yes, he said.
These items, these items get approved at budget time, but then we bring those quotes back through for village board approval once we receive them, so that you, you see it basically a second time so that you know what was budgeted versus what the actual quotes come in at. We don't, we don't go out for quotes, hard quotes, until the budget process is approved.
Okay, so those will all, like you said, come back in front of us for approval on whoever you buy them from?
That's correct.
For the clause, okay. All right, very good. Some of them seem like, you know, you got a Gator in here, I see. I thought we just bought one recently.
A Gatorade?
We have, we have... They have two.
We have, sorry.
Allison, relay.
Getting stuck in the repeat mode. We have a John Deere Gator, and we have a Kawasaki Mule. The Kawasaki Mule, I believe, is 2001, and that's what we are replacing, is the 2001 vehicle with a Gator, because the Gator is a lot more versatile and built a little bit better.
Okay.
In our opinion.
All right, so they'll be coming in front of us. The stump grinder's pretty well done, though, seeing it's a mix between Aloe and Ashwabnan.
It's a 50/50 split, but I don't know that they'll, they may...
Or is it going to be garage?
Still do some quotes and whatnot. I don't know if they've picked the exact one, per se.
Oh, okay.
If approved, we have a, we'll be working out a written agreement with Aloe in terms of repairs, in terms of usage, who's going to be using it? If something gets damaged, how's it going to be fixed by, you know, is it a 50/50 cost share, or is it by the municipality that's been using it? So, to be worked out.
I'm glad to see that we're sharing equipment with different municipalities, because some of that stuff's not used that often, and somebody else can get use out of it and pay for half the use.
Yeah, it's a great idea, yeah.
Yeah, so, very good, I understand it all.
And just a small issue, but it just bugs me to no end, this time of the year, and I think I talked to you, Doug, and Lee about this, but I see some properties out there where literally, from one end of this room almost to the other, the curb is full of branches. And they expect the village to come and grind those, and that, to me, is simply not appropriate. I could see, I can see branches, people trim trees a little bit, and that's kind, that's fine. And they're doing a great job, by the way, at Lee's. I don't know how they got all the time this year, but they're doing a great job at Lee's. But is there a point at which we say to folks, "Look, we, you're going to be charged for this service?"
Yes, and there are some occasions where we, where we don't pick them up and we notify them of that.
Okay.
I'm not going to give a...
Right, right.
Specific location, but we've, we've run into it probably six or seven times this year where there were some lots that were being cleared out for residential construction.
Sure.
And they cleared the lots out and stacked everything really nicely at the front of the curb.
Yeah.
But that's not what the residential brush pickup is for.
Amen, okay.
That's for, that, if you're going to build on a lot that's wooded, you're going to have to trim or take what you trim.
So we will let the person know, "Hey, we're not going to pick that up, okay."
Yep, we do, and it's generally a pretty frosty discussion, to be frank and honest, but that's...
I can imagine.
That's what ends up happening.
All right, thank you.
But, can't talk tonight. Doug, didn't we, didn't I bring this question up before, just like Ken, you know, why are we responsible? But didn't you go back and charge the people for that?
There were some of them on the side that we, we did not, and they ended up coming back and taking care of it themselves.
Okay.
If there's, if stuff has been sitting out there a long time and we're getting a number of complaints on it, if we're able to, we will and then charge them back.
Okay.
But the large majority of the time, that's seen right away, Lee goes out and travels those routes where we're going each day, and if he sees something of that nature, he contacts them to let them know that that's, that's not part of that operation.
Okay.
I have, I have to say that one of, one of the constituents that lives in Ashwabnan owns a business in a different municipality, and she has told me that you can't beat Ashwabnan Services. She said, "In the winter, when she leaves our municipality and goes into another, she can tell where the roads change over." And when it comes to the leaf pickup and, and everything, she said, "Ashwabnan is just great," so...
To kind of coincide with Mary said, I was with some people from a different area. They could not believe the service we provide in Ashwabnan that other communities don't have. If they have it, they pay for it. It's another bill they get every month, garbage. Garbage is number one, naturally. They get, they have to pay for it, so it's very, we're very fortunate to have a community that pays for the services that we have.
Not to end a love affair, but I will make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the 2018 budget as accepted. However, before we, I'm sorry?
Presented.
Presented, isn't that what I said? Presented? Oh, I'm sorry, presented. Does any of the department heads or anything would like to add anything to the conversation? They're well-trained. Any, any further discussion by the board?
I just want to know if Steve's still going to feed the geese on the ponds yet.
It's in the budget. So to clarify, too, assuming you approve the budget now, it gets, there's a publication in the paper, a required notice out to the public, and then it will be on the budget or on the board agenda at the end of the month for an official public hearing, and then official adoption at that time. So technically, I have one last crack at it, but we really, really, really would like to know that ahead of time.
So we're meeting on the 28th, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, again, I'd like to thank all the department heads, Allison, Greg, that this